I think that the Republican Party has to do as much as it can to be identified as a centrist party once again and show concern for things like education and public safety. That we have to go back in the middle. We have to encourage a greater dialogue between the two parties and move from that point. I mean, we have more in common than we don't, you know what I'm saying?
Hello. Welcome to the Cloudcast. I'm Alex Nitkin. I'll be your host this week. There are not a lot of Republicans left in elected office in Cook County, and those who are left have done it either by building a reputation as a fighter who's going to be a check against the Democratic powers that be, or as a kind of unifier who will work with Democrats to try and advance some common causes where they can agree on them. In Pete Silvestri's 28 years in county government, he has embodied that second breed. Silvestri recently announced that he's going to retire this year from his seat representing the Cook County Board's ninth district, which includes a lot of Chicago's far northwest side and suburbs around O'Hare. So he took some time with me to reflect on his decades in public service and talk about what he's taking away from it all. He talked about how he spent his career, starting from when he was one of the youngest people ever elected to office in the state's history, building this pattern of walking into contentious situations and getting people to cool off and work together. He talked about the county's struggle to move past its infamous clout-based operating systems so that it can professionalize and modernize. He talked about some of the tensions that have faced the Cook County Board under the administrations of previous board presidents John and Todd Stroger and now under President Preckwinkle. And finally, he talked about his philosophy on Republican governance and what politicians can do now to bridge the increasingly wide partisan divide that tears across governments everywhere. So here is my interview with Commissioner Silvestri. Commissioner Peter Silvestri, thank you so much for coming on the Cloudcast. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. Thank you for having me.
Of course. So I was doing a little bit of research for this. I learned something that I didn't know about you, which is that you were first elected to office at the age of 20?
Yes.
1971, the Elmwood Park School Board. How did you get into that?
Well, before we do that, let me just say that I was the youngest elected school board member in Illinois. I don't know if I still hold that title.
Oh, wow.
But I'm very proud of that. And it was a result of attending the high school in the district, Elmwood Park High School. And at the time, there were budget cuts necessary, as often as the case with local boards of education. And myself and some of the PTAs disagreed with the type of cuts that were being made. And with the assistance of the men and women of the various parent-teacher groups in our district, which was at the time four schools, they helped me get elected. And that's how it started. So the desire to be elected came from discontent with the types of cuts that they were making because they were not based on the right standards, you know? You can't say you only have 15 kids in chemistry, so you're not going to have chemistry. You know what I'm saying?
So this is to restore funding for some of the programs at the school?
It was to restore funding and to reprioritize the types of cuts that were being made. And it worked out fine. And then the referendum passed a few years later. I was elected, I was re-elected, and I was president of the board at the end of my term, I was the school board, at the age of, you know, 24. So...
Wow. And so then...
That's how it started.
From there, you went on to village president of Elmwood Park, right?
Right. I had a short stint on the village's board before that, trustee. What happened was our mayor at the time quit for medical reasons, health reasons, and one of the trustees became the mayor, and the mayor then appointed me as his, in his spot, as a trustee for, it was about a year, actually. And we had a very divided board. There were three factions. You know, you have six people, or three factions. It's not real conducive to getting much done. But we worked it out, and eventually we all worked together. Between working together and some demographic change, you know, one of the trustees left and moved out of town, we finally got everybody working on the same page. And they were all fine people, just disagreed on very basic issues, so...
What was the substance of the disagreements?
How the village was being run in terms of the old-fashioned way politically and a little more progressive. And as it ends up, in most cases, we ended up in the middle somewhere, as opposed to far, far to one extent or far to the other extent. But we were well received. I mean, I was elected six times, so obviously, people liked what we were doing in town. We had a very, very good cohesive board that got things done, and we still do. Just trying to get things going. You know, especially with an older town, there's a lot more issues in terms of infrastructure maintenance, kind of stuff we're seeing in Washington right now. There were roads and sewers and tree, parkway trees had to be replaced because they were dead. And just the types of things that local government do. But we did a lot of good things and we're proud of our time there.
I want to back up for a second because did you say that you were the president of the school board at the age of 24?
Right. I was elected to the school board when I was 20. And in my second term, after a teacher's strike, by the way, I was elected president of the board at 24, so...
Is it a little hard to command respect from a legislative body or a body full of adults when you're a kid like that?
Well, it's funny because, you know, you have to also add the fact that I was a student at that school a couple of years earlier. So now I'm dictating policy to people that were my teachers. So it was difficult, but not so difficult because they made it easy for me and I made it easy for them. We just developed a nice rapport. We did little things like having, you know, breakfast every month with the teachers' union and working with different parent-teacher groups. Obviously, I had an affinity to them because of their assistance with my school election. So it worked out pretty well, I thought. And was it difficult? Yes. I found it difficult to call people that were my teachers a few years earlier by their first name. And just, you know, silly things, silly things like that. But when it came to the policy, when it came to, you know, stuff before the school board, I think we had worked it out pretty well. Like I said, we were in a rough period because we just had a teachers' union, I mean, a teacher's strike just before that, and they were out 14 days. So I sort of felt as one of my missions had to be to bring the administration and the teachers' union closer together. And I think that because I was a student a couple of years earlier and because I was young enough to be able to, you know, be a little more pliable on issues, that it worked out that way. I think, you know, and not just me, obviously. Everybody worked together. But I tried to bring us in that direction, and I think it worked.
Talk about the path from Elmwood Park to... How long were you on the board there? You said six terms, so how many years is that?
Well, I was on the, I was on the board as a trustee for a year. And then when the elections came, the person who appointed me as a trustee, remember, one of the trustees became mayor, he decided not to run again. So we kind of coalesced and came to the conclusion that maybe I should run at the age of 32 at that point. And I did run, and I was successful in a three-way race. Each of the three factions on the village board that I told you about kind of had their own candidate in the race, which made it more difficult in the sense because of the six board members, three of them are running for mayor at the same time.
Wow.
So yeah, that was difficult.
Must be hard to divide government from politics in a situation like that.
It was hard, but I think that was one way that we worked it out. Because I think everybody finally realized that the best thing for the town is for people to work together.
And so you were village president for how many years?
I was village president for 30, for 24 years.
Wow.
Because even today, you could serve as mayor and a commissioner. So in the beginning of my term as commissioner, I stayed as mayor. And then the county board was changing. It was going from two districts, which was the city of Chicago district and the suburban district. There were 10 members from the city and seven members from the county. That was changing to 17 individual districts, which I think was a good move for many reasons, including the fact that it was more representative. If you're the city commissioner, if you're one of the 10 city commissioners and you live in Rogers Park, for example, it's hard to understand what people in Beverly might be thinking, or people in, you know, Grand Cross or somewhere else on the far south end, or even the west end, Austin. Cook County and Chicago are very diverse, even though we have a lot of things in common with each other. There are differences that I think get lost in the debate when you only have, you know, 10 people representing 3 million people and seven people representing 2.5 million people. So when they turned, when the legislature allowed us to change our form to a district-by-district situation, the referendum passed and the county board then created 17 districts. When the districts came out, the district that I would still represent was kind of a city slash suburban district, which is, as you know, I'm from Elmwood Park, which is exactly on the city border. So we had a lot of contacts on both sides of Harlem. We used to joke, I used to joke that mine was the Harlem, the Harlem district, you know, because it kind of covered that part of the city on the far west side.
Talking about Dunning, Gailwood?
Dunning, Edison Park, Norwood Park, Gailwood. Let's just say Gailwood to Edison Park in O'Hare, you know, that was the city part of the district, as far east as Austin at some points.
So the county was divided up into these districts, and you saw that as an opportunity to just sort of jump in?
I saw it as an opportunity because as a sitting mayor in Elmwood Park, I had a lot of relationships with, you know, the mayor of Oak Park and the mayor of Park Ridge and the mayor of Norwich and Howard Heights, different parts of my district. Plus, I knew that the two Aldermen very well. So I went to all of them. I visited all of them, kind of presented my case, and they all said, you know, it'd be a good idea to have someone from our community that's worked in our community to represent all the communities of the district. So it worked out well.
And remind us who the Aldermen were back then, and I guess 38 and 41 you're talking about, those wards?
I'm talking about 38, which was at the time Colleton. But it was a small part of 38. And a small part of 45, which was LeVar, P. L. LeVar, if you recall. And then 41 was Brian Doorty, who I ended up sharing office space with because a lot of our constituent issues were similar. And it was easier to consolidate and, you know, you have one Xerox machine instead of three. And then we had 36 with Bill Banks, you know, when Banks was an Alderman for a long time in the city too. So it worked out well. I always felt like part of my job was to represent the interests of the different communities in my district. And most of the time, those interests did not, you know, did not conflict. So I ran for the county board, and it worked out well. And I was there for another, I'm there, that was my first term. And now I'm entering my, you know, finishing my seventh term.
So 1994, you joined the board. It's for the first time ever, it's sort of divided up into these districts.
Right.
You join at the same time as, if I'm not mistaken, President John Stroger. Can you take us back to what that board was like, what the feeling was like, and talk about, you know, President Stroger and sort of his management?
Well, the board was, the day I was elected, I was elected with five other commissioners. So there were six of us coming in, which is a lot for 17-member board. And we, you know, our scope was really to try to represent the communities in our district because that's the way we came up, politically, so to speak, you know? They came from boards and it came from state-run districts and so forth. Even the staff was like that. And then we had the Old Guard who were there, the other 11 members, who went by the old rules. I mean, you know, this is pre-Shackman and pre-a lot of that stuff. And a lot of the policies were based on, you know, political concerns. And John Stroger, who was a wonderful man, a devout Catholic and a hard-working person, you know, he certainly came from the old school. I mean, he couldn't help it. He just came from the old school. So the conflicts that we have were basically on that. On the other hand, John Stroger wanted to be county board president. And if you look back, some of the people before him didn't necessarily want to be county board president. They wanted to be something else, you know, like governor or congressman. And so John, John Stroger had a very focused philosophy on the county. And that's what he pushed.
Meaning, so when you say others wanted to be other things, you mean others were sort of using the position as a stepping stone to a higher office?
Right. Right. And there's nothing wrong with that, except that the best way to get to the next office is to do a good job in the office you're in. But John didn't care about that because John's focus, again, was 100%. I'm finishing the new county hospital, which is still in the, you know, the county hospital was in the old building, which is now being the Malibu, as you know. And that started under the Stroger administration, although he was against it. The whole issue of what to do with the old hospital came up because he finished the new hospital. And, you know, just finally now, it's coming to the conclusion and to what the building would be like. But that was, you know, like you said, 25, 26, 27 years ago. So. And he did bring, he did bring a lot of change, but it was slow because of the philosophy, you know, in terms of Old Guard versus Progressive. You know, Progressive is relevant only, you know, so long. You can't be on the board and say you're Progressive 30 years after you got there. So I'm talking about at the beginning there, there were a lot of people from the old school, intelligent people who worked hard, but that's, but we were part of a system. I mean, that's just the way it was. And the Republicans were the same. I mean, it wasn't unique to Democrats. But John Stroger, again, because of his dedication, John Stroger did reach out to the Republicans and to the Progressive Democrats, and we got things done. Sometimes not as much as I'd like, and other times probably more than I'd like, but it got done.
So you're talking about this divide between Old School and New School, and particularly you mentioned this was before Shackman, that the Shackman decree really got teeth in like the mid 2000s and made people, you know, sit down these rules so that government officials couldn't make hires based on political alliances and things like that. Could you spell out some examples of what that looked like in practice, the Old School versus New School in terms of how they were operating, what they were trying to accomplish, who they were hiring?
Well, I think, yeah, I think, I think, and it's not universal. I mean, there were different individual cases, obviously. But I think the difference was that under the Shackman decree, the first question's going to be, what are your qualifications? What school did you go to? You know, what did you study? What did you major in? Whereas the Old School would be, the first question would be, which ward are you from? Which precinct are you from? Who sent you, basically? And that was not, you know, that was not germane just to the county board. That was government in general. And again, the Republicans did the same thing in Springfield. So it was a common, and I say that because I don't want people to say later, well, you know, you're a Republican, you paid on the Democrats. I'm not picking on anybody. The fact was that it was the same system with different names on each side. Because then, as you remember, there was a similar Shackman case on the state side. So I mean, it was a common practice. But that was the biggest difference, that it's something, because you can be very, very well-qualified, but if you weren't sent by anybody, you wouldn't be considered. And that's gone now, thanks to Shackman. And some people love Shackman, some people hate Shackman. And you've heard that the county board means that some will attack it. Although it's kind of been on the decrease, I think.
Right. I definitely want to talk about, I want to talk about Shackman in a minute because you in particular have a pretty key role overseeing some of that stuff based on the committee that you chair. But I want to keep talking about, you know, when you came on in 94 and you were part of this sort of New Guard, did you want to change things? I mean, how were you bringing things, you know, making things operate a little differently? Or what did you want to change at that point?
I think, I think that I wanted to change things to see the county progress, you know, where we're not having computers that are outdated and, believe it or not, typewriters in offices and so forth. And it's 1994. You know, if it was 1974, I could see where there'd still be, you know, typewriters. You know the typewriters, right, Alex?
I've heard of them. I've heard stories.
You saw pictures in history books.
Right.
But the, the, basically, yes, we wanted to modernize it in the sense that the county just was, you know, working on old rules and old policies and old procedures.
So you're talking about a pragmatic approach, the same thing it seems like you've been talking about as village president, just figuring out all the, you know, hard checklist items that need to get done.
Exactly. But sometimes the hard check, the hard check items need to be done, but you have to do the small check items to get to the hard check items, if you know what I mean. So sometimes things got better even though it wasn't the original intent. It just got better because the bigger picture got better.
Like what?
Does that make sense?
I mean, give me an example.
Well, again, when you talk about, well, when you talk about there was a creation of a technology officer, technology department, there was no such thing when I got there. But me and enough other commissioners pushed it where now we have, even now, we have a chief technological office, which you shouldn't. You talk about a $6 billion operation, and you talk about, you know, 22,000 employees, the computers should be at least, at least somewhat modern, you know? I remember saying to someone when we were at the beginning, I said, you know, these computers are probably from the, from the 80s, you know? And they said, well, you'd probably be better off thinking they're from the 60s or early 70s because that's when they were ordered. That's ridiculous, especially in technology, because things change so quickly.
Would you say technology's been a real focus of yours in particular?
It does. It was because I think it makes, it makes our mission easier when we have things like modern computers as opposed to some machine that's outdated, you know, in terms of personnel records, in terms of important histories of individual employee personnel records, hospital records. I mean, there's just a lot of things that need to be modern. You know, our court system, they have to have a modern reporting system, as well as a recorder of deeds, to make sure that your property's in your name, if it's supposed to be. So there was a lot of areas where technology was behind, and I think that that was one of the major accomplishments at the beginning especially, because they were so far behind that anything's improvement. So those are the types of things that improved, technology, personnel issues. Some were voluntary, some were forced. You know, the hospital, the administration wanted to tear the hospital down, the old hospital. And enough of us, and I'm talking Republicans, Democrats, and independents, said, you know what? There might be some better use for that. So that's how we got to that.
And you're talking about the Stroger administration?
Stroger administration, yes. And then, of course, John, when John left, unfortunately because he was ill and then passed, we had an interim period with Bobby Steele. And Bobby was very easy to work with because she was a commissioner for so long that she kind of, she kind of felt like the rest of us. And we got a lot done in the short period. And then Todd Stroger took over, and very, very nice man, very good, you know, good person. And he faced a lot of uphill battles because, you know, I can't really judge if it's based on his name or his party or the timing of politics at that moment. But it was, it was a struggle for all of us for a while. But then we worked it out where budgets were passed, that the deal got done. And of course, after Todd, Tony Preckwinkle won, as you know, and I think has done a lot to push the ball way down, down the field, to be honest. I think a lot of good things have happened. We don't always agree on everything, obviously, you know my record. But I think she's done a lot to modernize the place and bring it to the 21st century.
Yeah. I mean, when we talk about the Preckwinkle administration, here we are, we're 11 years into it, compared to either Stroger administration, the way that it operated, sort of what its priorities were, just sort of the feel of a board led by them, what are the real differences?
I think the real difference is that although President Preckwinkle has been in government a long time, she's not necessarily identified as part of the old system. Whereas John was definitely part of the old system. And we'll tell you that to your face if you ask them, obviously, because that's the system he grew up in. And the same with Todd. Todd kind of inherited that, that philosophy. So that's basically the difference, the Old School versus the New School of politics. Now, keep in mind, during that time, you know, going back, I know we're going to talk about it in a minute, but it had a big impact. When Shackman was actually involved through the federal court, obviously, the emphasis of the county government had to change too, because if you can't hire politically, there has to be a system of hiring. And which jobs should be hired politically? If you have a position that's a high-ranking position, part of the administration, the chief executive has the right, under every court case that I've read, to appoint those type of people. But then the problem between the Shackman lawyers and the county lawyers, the state's attorney's office, was the definition of who's exempt and who's not. So that's taken years, it's taken millions of dollars. And although we're closer now than we ever have been, you know, when I was first, when I was first appointed chairman of the litigation committee, we also had cases that were from the 80s on the jail, in terms of overcrowding at the jail. And those were all settled, you know, thanks to some hard work from the county board and the administration and the sheriff's office. It's finally now a place, you know, where the place operates within federal guidelines, you know?
Right. So like you mentioned, you're the chair of the Finance Subcommittee on Litigation, and you are sort of hearing these regular reports from the different monitors and overseeing that, who are supposed to be, you know, reporting to a federal judge. And there are three county offices that are still under Shackman oversight, right? There's the clerk's office, the assessors' office, and the clerk of the circuit court. It has been years, like you said, it's been millions of dollars by the county spent on legal fees. Do you think, do you see an end in sight? Do you think that an end of this, this case is on the horizon?
I'll remember when we spoke, if we had this conversation 10 years ago, that list that you just mentioned was probably three times the size of offices that...
You had the president's office, the jail, Forest Preserve District at one time.
Right. And so many more. Did you say recorder of deeds?
Recorder of deeds that was then folded into the clerk's office, yep.
Right. It is my goal as chairman of the committee to leave without having to talk about that anymore. I think it should be resolved. I think it goes back to your old-fashioned judge. What does it take in terms of being the defendant in this case to settle it? And then we should do it. And everybody's got to realize that no one's going to be happy with the decision because there's jobs that are probably considered exempt that are not really exempt. The judge may say that. And, you know, at some point, you have to throw on the towel if it's not going to, not going to work. And the other way around, too. I mean, there are situations where people are employed. And again, as you mentioned earlier, the chief executive has to have people that agree with her philosophically to get the job done. That doesn't mean every clerk at the counter of the circuit court, you know, circuit court clerk's office. But there's, you know, certainly there are people in certain positions that definitely have to be exempt. But I think if you look at the job descriptions, you can figure that, it's easily figured out. I don't think it's as difficult as people make it.
You mentioned earlier that there are plenty of critics of the Shackman decree. I mean, I think especially, we've heard this a lot from Clerk Karen Yerba's office, basically saying, you know, this is just getting drawn out longer than it needs to. It's so expensive to taxpayers. And you said it yourself, this was just the norm, that people would just sort of hire people who worked in their own ward organization before. I mean, why is it worth it? Why is it worth it to keep going down this path?
Well, as you know with my history, I don't think it's worth it. That's why I think it's time to end it. And, and I think we will have enough resources to end it this year. That's the goal.
This year?
Well, you know, the term ends this year, so I'd like to leave with the case being resolved.
Right.
And I think, you know, Commissioner Sibbs was on that committee for a long time, and she had her concerns. And, you know, I think she'd like to see it gone, as well as Larry Sufferin, who's a very active member of our litigation committee. So if I, if you had to ask me how it's going to end, I don't know the answer to that. I know that, like in every other negotiation, it's not going to be what they really likes, but that's how you move forward. You agree to some reasonable settlement, then you move on. I mean, and I have been saying this for a while. You know, government is a question of majorities. If I don't get, if I don't get four votes, it doesn't happen, so.
So speaking of majorities and minorities, you are one, sorry, you're one of two Republicans on the Cook County Board out of 17. You would not necessarily tell, I would say, by your voting record, meeting to meeting, or sort of the way, you know, just watching a meeting, you would not be able to tell that you are of a different party than, than everyone else, based on just what's happening. Can you talk about how you became a Republican and just sort of what being a Republican means to you?
Well, being a Republican means, it should be, and I meant this for a long time in terms of the Republican Party. It means stay out of people's personal lives. It means, you know, not creating bureaucracies to try to solve every problem. And of course, to control the amount of taxes that people pay, because the more money that goes to the government is that much less that goes into the community in terms of the grocery store and the bike shop and restaurants and so forth. So my idea of a Republican is basically libertarian that belongs to a group that does provide for tax increases when necessary. And the creation of bureaucracy when it's necessary. That's what my philosophy. And I think it's still the philosophy that government gets involved when government needs to get involved, not only when government thinks it should be involved. And there's other solutions to problems besides setting up another bureaucracy.
How do you feel like you've been able to advance that goal, working with a Democratic, you know, President's administration in President Preckwinkle and with these other Democratic commissioners?
I think that I'm fortunate enough to have relationships with my colleagues that they at least respect my opinion. And oftentimes, will vote the same way I do when it's not consistent with, with party labels. The county board and the things that we do are not necessarily Republican and Democratic issues. Raising taxes is, you know, creating bureaucracies is. And if you look at the whole record, you'll see that we've always opposed, you know, new taxes like the entertainment tax and the sugar tax. And we've tried to control the sales tax. In fact, we passed by the majority, then we ended up reducing that, and we ended up abolishing the sugar tax. So that's, that's when that comes out. So. But I don't think that anybody, I don't think that anybody in any government should be tied to Republican philosophy or Democratic philosophy only, because it's not as simple as it sounds.
You look at the Republican Party of today in Cook County and nationally, everything is obviously so much more polarized than, than it was. Do you feel like the current party has gotten a little bit away from your philosophy of what it means to be a Republican, or at least what it used to be, you know, back a couple of decades ago?
I believe that both parties have put themselves in a position of isolating lots of voters who don't necessarily agree with the whole program. And that's true of the Republican Party. It's also true of the Democratic Party. But in Cook County, it's obviously more prevalent in the Republican Party because it's such a, it's become more of a blue county than it was a purple county in the past. So I think, I think both parties are doing a good job of alienating voters. And because people don't want the Republican philosophy or the Democratic philosophy exclusively, because things don't always work out the way those philosophies dictate. So I think, yeah, I think that there's been a certain polarization among elected officials because of what happened. So I think, yeah, I think that there's been a certain polarization among elected officials, uh, because of what happens at the primary. The primary is, is, is constantly being, uh, used by people who want to take, take over the party one way or the other, whether it be Republican or Democrat. And all I'm saying is, is, you know, there's only so many ways to do a gallbladder operation at the hospital. So that's not, it's not the party's job to say, we shouldn't do, you know, we shouldn't do those type of surgeries or whatever. You know, I'm being too generalized, I apologize. But the, the parties need to get back in the middle of the street as opposed to being on one side or the other exclusively.
So the Republican Party is pretty much at a, a low point right now in terms of its historic power in Cook County. It's, uh, you know, a presidential off year for the Democratic Party this year. And a lot of Republicans across the state and including in Cook County are trying to, um, take back some offices. What do you think is the path forward for the Republican Party in Cook County?
I think that, that the Republican Party has to do, uh, as much as it can to be identified as a centrist party once again. And, and show concern for things like, uh, education and, uh, public safety. I think the Republicans generally look at public safety more than the Democrats, at least by polls, that, that, that's what you hear. Uh, but I think there's, there's more room there that, that we have to go back in the middle. We have to encourage a greater dialogue between the two parties and, uh, move from that point. I mean, we have more in common than we don't, you know what I'm saying? And, um, I think that should be the emphasis, to try to work together and get things done. I mean, certain things are just not partisan. They're just people, people important. And that's what we should be looking at.
I have heard President Preckwinkle, actually, in a recent interview, describe you as kind of the lubricant of the board, someone who brings people together and, and helps get things passed and, and break log jams. And I've heard you describe it just in this conversation, going back to the school board and the council in Elmwood Park, different factions and different groups, and you try to bring them together and, and find compromise. Do you think that that is sort of like a dying art in, in politics and in government? The people who just want to bring everyone together and, you know, bridge the divides?
Do I think it's a dying concept? I think the concept is correct. I think people should be doing that. And I hope that whoever takes my position or takes some of the other positions will be dedicated to doing exactly that. But is there an interest as, as common as it should be? No. People are concerned about how it affects their role, how it affects their, you know, position in the community. And I, and I do too. Don't get me wrong, but I've been elected fifteen times, so I must be doing something right. Uh, in terms of trying to bring people together. And I appreciate the, uh, my colleagues and the president's kind of remarks on that issue because I, I do see that as part of my legacy. So.
What do you think would be a first step to making that happen, either in county government or, you know, city or state? How will we know when we, you know, what, what would be a, a good first step? Or what is a tangible way that, that, that sort of coming back to the center can happen?
I think that, I think at some point, the general public will be so much, uh, for that, that it will happen. Uh, there are people in both parties that prevent that because they benefit from people that are not getting along. Uh, but I think that will change. I think people are, people are starting to become even more concerned about the polarization that exists in Washington and Springfield and to a lesser extent at the municipal and county level. Uh, and I think that the future will show that the people, uh, will be telling their representatives to cut it out and get back to business. Because the people, you know, people don't care how they pay their mortgages. They just want to pay their mortgage, as long as it's legal, of course. The same is true of other issues, you know? Is there a better way to provide healthcare? There might be, but it's not necessarily based on, um, political philosophy. It's based on medicine and science and all those things. So, and the next step has to be that people are going to commit themselves to meeting the bill of the road as opposed to constantly trying to just push people off of their side of the street, if that makes any sense at all.
You mentioned the, you know, you're going to have a successor. There's going to be an open race for the ninth district. Open the, um, northwest side and northwest suburbs, west suburbs. Um, you're one of three retiring commissioners. Those commissioners suffered in the north suburbs. And, and I feel like we've heard a lot there and also with the fifth district, um, being left open by Commissioner Sims in the south suburbs. Uh, we've heard about candidates stepping up and sort of races getting underway. I, I feel like, at least from my perspective so far, that the race has been a, a little bit quieter so far in the ninth district. Can you talk about, you know, is there a candidate or candidates who you sort of have your eye on? Or how are you sizing up the, the race at this point there?
There's probably about twelve people that have said that they were interested. And I, you know, I'm watching, yes, but that doesn't mean that they're not going to file, but that there's twelve people talking about it. Or at least there were twelve people talking about it. But, you know, until they file, it's really hard to tell who's where, you know? I mean, we have, we have different counties on both sides of the aisle that are doing well in terms of fundraising. Or at least, you know, that's the perception. So I, I'm assuming it's correct.
Have folks started to come to you to ask for your, your thoughts, your advice, maybe even your support?
There've been, there've been, there've been questions, yeah, there've been people wanting to get together and talk about the office, you know, and what, what it does. And, uh, I've been very receptive to that. And, um, there are people who, again, talk about running, but until they file, it's really difficult to, to really have a conclusion on how many people will run.
Can I get you to name any names?
I think we should talk about the names when, when the finally actually occurs. Uh, because before that's premature and I think that that would be, it would be unfair to them, to be honest.
Sure.
Because you know, whoever I like is going to win. You know that right now.
So do you plan on endorsing someone, you think?
We're going to see how it goes, but I would like to. I mean, I, I take this position very seriously. I, it's, I've been the only ninth district commissioner since it was created.
Right.
Which has got to give you some, some, you know, some perspective on what's right and wrong. But I think, I think whoever it is, they have to remember that county districts are a creation that someone sat down and drew lines. Uh, but the communities within those districts are, are what should be, you know, considered on different issues. And I think, I think that would make the job easier, actually.
Yeah. Describe for me then, in the abstract, the ideal person to hold this seat after you are gone.
Well, the ideal person's leaving, so.
Other than you, I mean.
Other than me, uh, I would think that it, well, I would have to define some of my philosophy, that being the centrist philosophy in terms of partisanship. Uh, beliefs that not every problem is solved by creating a bureaucracy or, or creating a new tax. Uh, but there are times when you have to. I mean, there are times when if the money is being spent right, it's still not enough. You have to make the choice of either reducing the service or increasing the tax. And, you know, my first vision is always to see how we can reduce, how we can make necessary cuts to comply with the amount of money that we have coming in. And that's what the new person should do too. This district represents the northwest side of Chicago. And if you look at the records of the Oliveran over the last twenty years, they're generally anti property tax. I don't think there's a property tax increase been ever voted on by any government on the northwest side. So when taxes come up at the county, you know, your first conclusion is, well, how do we, how do we avoid the tax? And how do we avoid the increase? And I think my successor should be aware of that.
Should come from a baseline of how do we avoid more taxes or costs on voters?
Right. And the same is true with the bureaucracy. I mean, you can't, you can't provide service without a bureaucracy. It's just a question of how big the bureaucracy gets and if it should be increased before there's cuts made. And I think, I think that's just logical. I mean, before you, before you spend more money, you want to make sure that you're spending the money that you have correctly. So.
I do want to ask how you size up the candidates who are running for governor now. Uh, we have sort of, you could say, a more moderate candidate in Richard Irvin and, and a less moderate, maybe a candidate, you could say, in Darren Bailey. Is that something that you are, are following or do you feel like you, um, you know, are starting to form a preference there?
I'm excited, I'm excited by the, the nature of the candidates. I think it's a very diverse group. Uh, I'm glad that, uh, Mayor Irvin is one of the candidates, only because I think the municipal perspective is helpful at, at the governor's level too. Um, it just, again, you know, if you're, if you're going to, if your sink is flooding the house, you're not going to call the guy right out of plumbing school. You're going to get a seasoned plumber to come and fix it. So there's something to be said about that in government too. I mean, the philosophy today, the philosophy today is that, you know, anybody that's been there more than a day is, is been there too long. Well, it doesn't, doesn't work that way. Uh, but no, I think it's an interesting group. I don't know enough about all of them to tell you who's going to be the next governor. Um, obviously Governor Pritzker has, you know, walked in at a difficult time too with the COVID. Uh, and, and there's a lot of money involved. I mean, a lot of these candidates apparently are bringing much money to their campaign. So it's going to be interesting.
I have one, uh, last question for you here. Um, and that is, what's next? You're still a relatively young guy. Um, you're retiring. Are you going to go back to the school board? Make it full circle?
What do you mean, what do you mean relatively young?
You're a young guy.
What does that mean? Uh, I am an attorney by trade. I'd like to develop, uh, some more legal experience. I think that, uh, you know, the public sector, there's a lot to be talked about. And it's true in the private sector too, people have to know about their government, about how it works. So in that respect, I'd like to teach more. I'd like to teach a class or two at universities. So if there's any university presidents out there listening, you know, resume is in the mail. I'd like to teach. I'd like to, uh, practice law more and maybe travel more too.
Well, I hope you get there soon. Commissioner Peter Silvestri of the ninth district, now retiring after twenty eight years and many years before then in public service. Thank you so much for coming on the Cloudcast. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having us and thank you for, so to speak, all for buying into our voice.
Thanks again to Commissioner Silvestri for coming on. Check back in for future episodes of the Cloudcast where we will try and sit down with Commissioner Sims and Saffordon, who are also retiring this year. And of course, read the daily line to get the latest on the upcoming election to fill their seats. This episode of the Cloudcast was produced and edited by me, Alex Nettie. We'll be back with another episode in two weeks.